Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 12, 2019, now filed to order at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is being recorded broadcast live by local... Oh, it's not actually being broadcast live right now. We're recording, but it's not being broadcast live. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that's recording the meeting? No, hearing none. Please rise into the room and send a salute to the flag. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So at this time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted consent by the chair. So we're going to go with the Auburn Master Plan. So the 2019 Auburn Master Plan requesting adoption of the master plan. Do you want to talk to the people?
So Greg Bowling, Chair of the Master Plan Committee.
Greg, I can reach member of the Master Plan Committee.
Mark Emery, Vice Chair.
Welcome.
So I guess, you know, real quick, brief, we've spent the last three-plus years compiling the update to the master plan that was last done in 2006. And we've gone through a public review process and OLP series, and so we have a final draft version that we voted on a couple of weeks ago to pass on to the Planning Board for consideration. And so a printed copy is there. Adam, if there are any questions, if you have to answer them, otherwise that's it.
Did you have anything to add?
If the Planning Board decides to adopt this tonight, it'll be sent off to the state and the town's master plan for when our 10, 15 years later, the town decides to do another one. There's no expiration date on this. It's just required by the state law that we have one. And from time to time, update it, so.
What were some of the big highlights?
I would say, and I know Adam kind of had a little presentation that we did at a public meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I think the Drury Square sort of downtownish center was, I think, a theme that goes throughout all sections of the plan. I think there's, you know, considerations for make sure we maintain, you know, some of the character of the existing town. I know that there's, you know, through the housing plan that we incorporated, there's a sort of identification of a need to maybe diversify some housing stock. There's a maybe shortage of some rental property as well identified in terms of just an overall mix. Also identifying that we're below the 10% affordable housing threshold, so there's recommendations there for some things to help adjust that as well.
Things and chapters were updated in regards to schools when they did the plan before. Some things have been consolidated now, different buildings, so some updates in those chapters.
Mm-hmm.
Some facilities, I think that, you know, there are parts of the plan that we identified two, three years ago that are already in motion, such as the public safety evaluation that's going on. That's a would have been a recommendation that we do the process that we've been going through, you know, in the plan, and so we got a jump start on that, obviously, with the committee that's doing work there, some things like that. No huge surprises. You know, I think we identify an economic desire to try to diversify some of the employment opportunities, jobs in town with some maybe professional office-type jobs to sort of gird ourselves against the retail fallout, which was sort of the largest employer. And I think there's been action on that front, you know, in regards to some changes around the mall zoning and things like that to sort of encourage some of the development that we're seeing that's, you know, bringing in some couple banking administration centers. And obviously, the Reliant move is all in line with kind of recommendations from an economic point of view. There's a couple focus areas, I think, that we identify as both industry as well as locations in town.
There's a lot of proposed zoning changes that will affect this board in the next few years, whether you perceive with those changes as we see, but it's a lot of recommended zoning.
Yeah, I think there was a overall consensus that the zoning as a whole is a little too complicated and cumbersome for a town of our size, and that there's some recommendations to really clean that up. And then a lot of it's just outdated, just haven't kept up with the modern times. Yeah. I think the other one would be mixed use. You know, the zoning laws today, other than over by BJ's and Home Depot, do not allow residential, commercial mixed use without special permission or whatever, except for, I guess, the residential office, I suppose. But I think what you see in modern zoning trends these days is that people want to kind of live and work and eat kind of all in the same area, be able to walk to places and things like that. So there are things that can be done zoning-wise that would sort of free developers up to kind of meet those needs and then maybe even encourage it without being overly, you know, onerous to the town. So there's some recommendations in there.
Anybody have anything, any questions or anything to add?
No.
John?
Just want to thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
We're the last survivors.
We started off with more.
Yeah, this is what we ended up with. So I want to, you know, thank Adam for his support as we've kind of pulled this together at the end. And of course, you know, Matt, when we were working under him, did quite a bit of legwork on sort of getting some of the pieces in order, as well as, you know, town administration for helping us with facilities, chapters, and giving us site visits and those sorts of things. And, you know, and then we were able to secure some grants and things to mostly fund this without a lot of just tax money, other than a little bit at the end to pull together the traffic and stuff that we needed and stuff like that. So, you know, so enjoy, I guess. Some light reading for the...
Thank you. So are we going to vote on it this evening, or do you think, what would you recommend?
I recommend you vote. There's been lots of opportunity for comment over the past couple months, over the past year, and multiple years, especially in the past few months with the public outreach push that the boards have. If there's anybody in the public that's in the audience here that has any comments, but...
Any public comments on the master plan? No. Okay. Make a motion to adopt it.
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to adopt the master plan.
Make a motion to adopt the 2019 Auburn Master Plan as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
7:05, two-family detached dwelling requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4. Two-family detached dwelling on property located at 6 Pioneer Lane, Auburn, Mass., map 55, parcel 183. Make a motion to open the hearing, please.
I'll make the motion to open the hearing.
All those in favor? Good evening, Todd.
Madam Chair, thank you. Todd Broder from Fletcher Tilton here on behalf of the applicant EB Realty Trust. Two applications back-to-back in your hearing notes tonight, but this one is for 6 Pioneer Lane. This is an established residential neighborhood, nice roads, sidewalks, mix of single and two-family detached dwellings. This would be the first lot in a row of five or six two-family dwellings. It's vacant now, looking to be developed. We did receive a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're here because your bylaw requires special permit, requires site plans. We asked for a number of waivers from some of the technical requirements, topography, lighting, landscape, site plan prepared by the professional engineer, drainage calculations.
It's a one-two family home.
Sorry?
One-two family home.
Yes, good. The lot complies with all the dimensional, you know, lot area setback, frontage, I have, you know, within your packet. I don't know that you saw the floor, but we showed them to the Zoning Board. It's attractive.
Yeah, I don't think I have any...
I can pass it around.
And you say this is the first of how many?
No, just in your, on your agenda tonight. The next, the next hearing is...
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you were saying there was going to be more than one of these developments.
No.
Okay.
Nope, nope. This is a, you know, a single lot. The lot next to it was sold off a few years ago. This one, it remains, and it's, as Adam shows on the screen there, it's...
And it's mostly single-family homes in that neighborhood?
No, it's, it's single up until this point, and then it's, and then it's two-family and across the street, and then down the road, it's two-family. So there's a row of six or so on each side, two families. Yeah. Kind of ping-pong back and forth across the road, five or six as you go down.
Yeah.
They'll have, they'll each have their own driveway, garage, one car plus the driveway, for three-bedroom units. And I'm just passing the architectural around now.
How many square feet did you need there? Is that A, residential A?
This is residential A, yes.
All right.
I have it here, but just a second.
Nineteen thousand?
I believe it's nineteen thousand.
Yep. Hundred feet of frontage.
And Todd, right where it says Google, is, if you came this way, is that the back of CBS?
I'm sorry, right where it says what?
Google.
Yes.
So that was Alfreda's old house.
That I don't know, but what I do know is there is a, there's a restriction on like filling and moving dirt in that rear area, because we think there's some wetland in the back.
Right in the back of the other end.
Right. And that's understood, but this, this plan is up towards the, you know, the front of the site. Wouldn't impact that area.
Adam, any, anything to add?
No, it's pretty straightforward and complex. I don't think I had any comments from any other departments in town.
Is this going to be a rental property, or is this going to be a...
Yes, in all likelihood, but this has the real possibility at some point anyway to be, you know, a two-unit condo. Yeah, just a, that's a kind of market thing. Right now, it might work.
Yep.
Two or three years, it might not.
Or it might not.
And now it might work again.
Yep.
But the intention, I would imagine, right now is to have it as a... Yes.
Yep. Did you have any questions?
No, I don't. That was mine.
Scott? Johnny?
Nope.
Johnny?
Just one. Does the surveying get subtracted from total square foot of the lot?
I do not know.
No, it wouldn't, but I think it would, I think it's still...
It wouldn't matter.
No, it's no problem. Thirty-five thousand square feet, the lot, the surveying.
Yeah, it's a nineteen thousand requirement.
Well, not that it would bring you close, I was just curious of the answer.
Yeah, I don't think so. It doesn't typically, I mean, lot area is lot area, unless the bylaw has provision. Some towns have, you know, upland requirement, you know, and then you have to count the non-wet areas, but your bylaw doesn't have anything like that.
I don't know, so...
Okay.
You probably answered this just, there's two single-family homes right next to it, correct? There's a single, as you're looking at it here, on the left-hand side is single-family, but as you go up the road, that's two-family. Across the street's two-family. Okay. Up and up is two-family, across is two-family. Okay. It's two-family to the left, oh, excuse me, it's one, it's single-family to the left. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Any other questions? Detained motion? Any public comment on? No. Motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept as presented the site plan approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
With the waivers?
With waivers. The wa, right.
Just with the waivers.
Yes, yeah. Do you want me to list those, or?
No.
No, okay, all right.
No special requirements here?
No, just the, yeah, no, because it's just a, you know, another house that I'm existing.
No.
So, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you.
Motion to open two-family detached dwelling requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4 for two-family detached dwellings on property located at 10 Stone Street, Auburn, Mass., map 57, parcel 018. With waivers. Motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Todd Broder from Fletcher Tilton here on behalf of the applicant EB Realty Trust. Similar to what we just discussed, this is a lot on Stone Street. There was a single-family home there with some significant problems, needed to be torn down. It was, I believe it was a condemned property. I know what the assessor's records said it was unsuitable for human habitation, so it makes sense. The builders purchased it, demolished the home, and kind of prepped the site. It's the same structure as last time, two single, as we just went through, excuse me, with the two-family dwelling side by side. This one, the only difference is it has a little bit of a site elevation change, so in the rear, it would be a walkout here instead of just a flat, you know, level lot there. I do have, I did receive from the surveyor in the last few days an updated plan. I think they've done some further site work and tried to locate the best place on the site for the house, so they moved it forward by about three feet. So I've got a revised plan, which I'm happy to provide to you. It's, I didn't even recognize the change when they sent it to me, so I had to call them and ask them what exactly they changed, but there is, there is a change in, slight change in the location of the building on the lot. But again, this, this lot, you know, will meet the various setbacks and frontage requirements and the like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My understanding is this lot was the talk of the building department for some time in terms of desire to move on to a nicer, newer project.
Is this the house that was just recently removed on the lower end of By Elm Street?
Yes. So it's a nice little spot, still a lot of trees left around, so it's nice buffers for neighbors. In the plan that I passed around for the last hearing, it's the same design on the dome, so.
Which lot is it on the street?
Where all the trees are?
It's pretty deep on it. It's up the street from there. Yep, it's all that red, yep.
So that house was taken down?
That was the one that was torn down.
Yes. And the garage, so it's...
Next to it.
How far is that house off the road, Todd?
I'm not sure.
Is it more than the forty-five feet? Can't tell from the picture.
I'm not sure of that either.
Is there anyone here from the public, 10 Stone Street? No. Do you have any?
We did go through the special permit process on this as well, so we've been, we did have some, have some neighbors, and we figured some issues out with them on trees and whatnot, so.
There were no comments from any other departments.
Okay.
Two families with duplexes in the area? There are a few. There's not quite the same sequence thing as the other street Pioneer Lane, but there are a few. One is somewhat diagonal and up the street on, on Stone Street, I believe, and there's another down and around the corner. Okay. It's a little bit more single-family than the other neighborhood, but there are...
So this one is a two-family up and down in the corner of Grove.
Yes, exactly. So there's at least...
Is there anything he doesn't know?
Oh.
Scott?
Nope.
Question?
Is this going to face the street?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not going to be lengthwise or anything?
It's a pretty wide spot. The picture with the house and the garage fit fine on the lot. And again, there's still a lot of trees over there, so it's not like they just knocked them all down and... There's one driveway, right? Currently, that, on the, on the old site, I think there might have been just one. And this is one in the middle. Okay.
One driveway for two. That should be fine. John, did you have any questions?
Nope.
Anything else?
We don't have any. There's no, nothing, no problem with common driveway.
That will have to be, go through, give it to you for a driveway permit, so they're okay with it. I don't have a problem with it.
Yep.
Or does? Can you pass along his comments?
Good luck with that. All right. Motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the site plan with waivers?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know you keep me on my place. So, I don't even, I'm not going to... Don't even address it. Is that your attorney? Arcade Game Room.
Help us, Scott.
Is there anyone here for the 7:15 hearing for the Arcade Game Room? No, okay. All right. Applicant Mass. 10 Enterprises LLC requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.5.2 and 3.2.5.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for restaurant use and special permit under Section 3.9.2.2 for drive-through service use Starbucks on property located at 824 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 66, parcel 148. Aye.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Doherty. I'm with Midpoint Engineering, offices at 826 Southbridge Street in Auburn, Mass. Adam, I sent you the site plans via email. I've got the printed-out board if need be. You would agree, the one to start with would be the top one.
Excuse me. This is not... This is the main street. While we go through some...
So we're here for 824 Southbridge Street. You may get confused with some of the addresses. I imagine, it's actually where my office is, where I said I'm at 826. The assessor's addresses and the mailing addresses are not necessarily the same. So we're here for 824 Southbridge Street. It's about thirty thousand square foot lot that contains a two-story building. It's the center building on the site plan here, and this is, this is an existing conditions plan. It was part of a, you know, three-property assemblage, or I think it was originally a single assemblage that, that Galaxy Development had purchased and developed in phases. To the left of the site is Chili's Restaurant. To the right of the site is a combination Taco Bell and KFC with the drive-through. The property received site plan approval in 2006. At that time, what was approved was a two-story office building, or I mean, a two-story building with office on the second floor and a bank with a drive-through on the first floor. It was constructed for the site plan. You can see that the drive-through configuration was constructed, but the bottom floor was never occupied by a bank. It was marketed to banks for several years, and then in 2010, Galaxy and Midpoint occupied the first floor. There's thirty-six parking spaces on that property. There are a hundred and one parking spaces on the Chili's property. There are thirty-three parking spaces on the KFC-Taco Bell property. There's three curb cuts. To the far right is a right-in only from Route 12. Towards the middle is a right-in and a right-out driveway under Route 20. In this area is the divided highway, so there's no possibility of making either left turn movement. And then there's a right turn out onto Maple Street that would get you back over to Route The first, second floor was originally occupied by St. Vincent's Hospital. Within the last year or so, they've moved out and Steadfast Family Dental has moved in, so that's continued to be a medical, professional office type use. Do you want to go to the next plan? So the applicant proposes to re-tenant the first floor. Midpoint and Galaxy would be moving out, and Starbucks would be moving in. Starbucks requires a drive-through. Our proposal would be to modify the site slightly by adding about a fifty, fifty-square-foot bump out, which would be only on the first floor, and that would be for, for the drive-through pickup window. We'd be adding an outdoor patio area to the right side of the building, modifying the front doors so that there would be separate entrances for the two businesses. One would lead upstairs and one would go into the Starbucks. And then there would be drive-through equipment located towards the back left of the building, the typical equipment being a hype bar, a menu board, and an order, order board. We're also proposing a six-foot-high privacy fence in the area of the drive-through components. This area is landscaped pretty heavily, but there is a gap about seventy feet long between some three large pine trees and then, you know, a forested hill, so what we're proposing there is to, to install a privacy fence. Other improvements that we're proposing are more to help the circulation. And that would be to change the radius of the, of the curb cut from Route 20 so that people coming in and making a right, it's a little bit softer of a curve. Right now, it's, you know, comes up with a, with a real, real hard curve. We'd also be relocating a stop sign. Right now, the stop sign is about in the middle of the intersection. We would move that back to prior to where the, the drive-through traffic would exit. And we would also install signs below the stop signs, just, just indicating to do not block, block intersection. The Starbucks would be open from, from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Chili's Restaurant is open from 11:00 a.m. to midnight. Taco Bell, KFC is open 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And Steadfast Dental is open from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Starbucks traffic really peaks in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00. That's the time when, when the other heavy traffic uses are not open. During those peak hours, about a hundred to one hundred and thirty transactions are made. Just over fifty percent of them would be through the drive-through, so we're really talking about one car per minute that would be coming in through Route 20 or Route 12 and making a left and circulating around the property, and about two cars per minute leaving the site. You know, I've been at that site for about eight years now. You know, I don't know of any problems that's occurred, you know, at that intersection. You know, Chili's and Taco Bell have been operating the entire time as well, and I don't see any problems, you know, with this morning traffic. I go in into the office every morning now. We also were asked to look at Q lines. We did get a comment via email, not in support of a drive-through, mostly because of impacts that it has on the roadway system. Do you want to pull up the third slide I had? So I looked, and I didn't realize how many drive-through restaurants there are in operation, but I believe there was ten or eleven that, that I looked at, and, you know, I did a scaled plan. So there's ten or nine existing restaurants with drive-through along Route 12 and 20 or Route 12. Our site is, is located here. Our site is, is located here, this would be the, the property with the Starbucks. That would have over 400 feet of, of queuing length, you know, before it could ever impact the road, which is, well, exceeds, you know, any of the other, any other drive-throughs. The one drive-through that was noted as being a problem is the Dunkin' Donuts near the mall. And that is located...
Yeah, that one's only 300 and, 300 and change square feet, just over 300 and change square feet in length before it starts impacting.
And that would be Route 20. You know, it's, it's less than that.
Route 12.
Route 12, yeah.
It's less than that to the, to the side street there, it's, you know, minimal. So it's pretty short.
If you could just scroll down to, and you've, you've got the, the other one there. And also, in that location, you can make left turns in and left turns out. And, um, you know, we were told that there had the backups on Route 20 there, so. We've got...
12.
Route 12. So we've got, we've got, you know, sufficient capacity for, for queuing vehicles.
So you're saying you've got 400 feet of queuing?
Before, before it could, could possibly queue up.
Come out onto the street.
So you're gonna enter in onto, off Route 12, onto...
You can take the right end of 12.
Into Chili's, and then swing around through their first travel lane?
Yes.
And come in?
Yeah.
Or you can come in through the, you know, Taco Bell entrance that way, and slide through the site.
Again, Starbucks is busiest, you know, in, in the morning, when Chili's is not even open. You know, granted, they are open during the hours, that Chili's is busy, but that's when their, their traffic really tails off.
Mr. Brooks may remember all this from 2006, when the initial permitting was going on. I looked at the old records and the minutes and the decisions, but...
I do.
This, this configuration all came about as a result of lots of discussion at that time about number of curb cuts and the reconfiguration of 12 and 20, which this developer had a heavy hand in financially in supporting the, the analysis. But that's why it has one in, one out on, on 12.
So, you can't come straight in your entrance and go up and around? You don't have it designed?
No.
It's designed such that it has to go through onto Chili's property?
Right.
And circle up around?
So, you know, this is where the, the order menu would be. We are proposing, you know, do not enter signs here. This would still be open more for drainage purposes and also as a bailout lane for, for cars in queue. So, you know, you would come in off of Route 20 and make a left, go through the first row of Chili's, and make a right, and get into the queue lane or the bypass lane. You could also come in off of Route 12, you know, if you, if you were heading towards the intersection. Go past KFC through the intersection and make a right.
You talked about putting some trees up on the top opposite where the speaker is and the signboard, where there's a vacancy of 70 feet, you said?
We, we, we're proposing a...
Because this house is right across.
Yeah, we're proposing a six-foot-high privacy fence. We wouldn't be taking any trees down. There are three, you know, large pine trees that were installed, you know, roughly 10 years ago when, or, or 12 years ago when, when Chili's was constructed.
So when you measured that queue lane, you measured it from the sign down through the parking lot to the entrance? And that's 400 feet?
On the point of service.
Yeah, about 420 feet, from here, coming around.
What about from the entrance to where they, they have to stop to place their order?
From here?
Yep.
It would be 120 less, it would be 300 feet.
So it's about the same as Dunkin' Donuts?
No, Dunkin' Donuts, they also measured from where you picked up.
Okay.
And that was, it was...
The 10, the 10...
25 feet there.
The 10 measurements that are, that the charted out plans there were all from the point of service.
Yeah. And that...
Nothing.
Right, but the queuing actually starts where the order board is.
Yeah, I guess, we, so we showed that graphic, I guess, to illustrate that of the 10 drive-throughs in town, this would be the longest queue length of any of them.
I understand.
Point of service to impacting a roadway. And what, and it exceeds, I mean, any, any of the towns I do work in, it, it well exceeds any of those queue length requirements in any, any town I've ever worked in. 240 feet is the city of Worcester, I know that one pretty well. And we did a Starbucks, actually, Pat and I did the Starbucks in the Galaxy Trolley Crossing project, the old WRTA site on Park Ave. It's 240 feet.
Yep, and we did a similar one on Sutton 146, which is a high-volume one. Yeah, I believe that one is about 200 feet as well. And then, just to get back to the Dunkin' Donuts, we have measured 300 feet from the order window to Route 12, and only 165 feet, I mean, from the pickup window to Howe Street, you know, where it starts back up on Howe. And I think there's only three or four queuing spaces from Howe Street to the, to the order...
To the order window?
Yeah.
The order board?
With the speaker.
Yep. Well, you have been privy to the email stream from Andrew Slukas, who's the chief of police, and also from the DPW.
We put together the graphic on the queue length response to the chief's concern about, about. It's noted, we, I mean, we understand, that's, that's a concern, we talk about drive-through windows.
Yeah, and so this is, it's a deal breaker. If Starbucks doesn't get the drive-through window, they're not gonna rent the space, correct?
Correct, they, they do not build any new, new stores or rent any new stores outside of, you know, dense urban areas without drive-throughs.
Without the drive-throughs.
And this would be a new store, it's not replacing the one on Route 12.
When you're cutting the radius on that middle entrance, then you'll lose a parking space, one or two?
Just one, yes. Yeah, and we'd still be in compliance for this property alone as well. You know, if you look at the three properties together, which we haven't, it would be, you know, there'd be several extra spaces.
And I just wanna say, we, as I've always been and known it here, we base our decision on each individual case, not on comparisons to what's already done someplace else. We just...
Right, that was, that, that graphic, and the reason I presented it was in response to the question.
We know where the, all the problems are in the windows and...
Yeah.
Well, seems to be, probably not great at scaling, but like, how many cars is that actually? If that's so much longer space?
20 feet per car.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Um, I definitely give weight to Chief Slukas, to his comments. That extra 100 feet does feel like it's, I don't feel like the circumstances are exactly the same here in this case, though. Could be wrong about that, but... And access easements are in place with Chili's?
Yes, yep, yep, there's for separate easements for everything.
For, hey, they're private there from the original design. Sorry.
Yeah, I just, uh... Just wanna make sure it's, 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 'cause we're not gonna do it. They, when, back in 2006, when they came, he, Mike O'Brien did, you know, they did a fantastic job developing the site, which, with what it was prior to that, with Mass 10 Truck Stop.
Yep.
And it, it just sat and sat. However, we just, we just gotta make sure that this is, I don't know if board members wanna go and look and just see what it looks like, and you can drive in like that, right? You can go right in there and circle up around, and we can envision, based on where Maple Ave cuts out. And I know at the time we gave that exit, we, we were reluctant, because I don't, we didn't wanna direct any business traffic into a neighborhood, so... But it was kinda the only way out.
And I think when you, you know, looking back and you approved it for a bank, you know, a bank is way different than a coffee shop.
Way longer turn times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just curious, is there, I may not have the answer to this, of course, right now, but is there a way to let us know the average, I guess you could, for lack of a better term, but turn time on how many customers move in and out at a Starbucks? I'd be interested to find that out, 'cause it seems like it takes me longer to travel to a Starbucks, so...
Oh, yeah.
I can, I can tell you that...
I'm not trying to be, you know, I just, just out of curiosity.
It's the placement of our, of our speaker to the order window is, is by their direction and their studies. And I don't know how many minutes it is, but, you know, with the six cars between
Sure.
the, the pickup, the order, there's very little cars behind the order. I wanna get people in, in queues as fast as they can, so... You know, what they have, what they require for their, their site is six cars from the, from the pickup to the order, and then at least three cars behind. So that, that's what their operations say.
I do know if you, if you Google that question, which I did, yeah. There's a, there's actually kind of a guru, drive-through guru, that has all sorts of study information on it. Not only that, but Starbucks has kind of their own information publicated on, you know, on, you know, through your various searches, you can find it. They, all these, all these stores get graded on essentially company cars and customers they turn through. So they, there's a lot of information available.
I just think...
The, the queue length that, that we've got, the 400 feet plus, which is, what, 20 plus cars? Is, is much longer than most of theirs.
Yeah, for there, like I said, I don't know if any of you have heard, when Starbucks reviews all their sites, you know, they do their projections, and what they, they requested is six cars from the order window to the, the, the speaker. I mean, the pickup to the speaker, and then three cars behind it. So they're, they're not expecting more than, you know, three, three cars in queue behind that speaker.
Was that similar to the one they did, that you just did, and was that you referenced?
Yes, I believe, yes, that one has seven cars from the pickup to the speaker, and then, I think that one has four or five passing.
Where'd they take this survey, in the middle of the desert? I mean, come on, I can see the cars between the window and the speaker, but three cars behind it? No way, no way, there'll be 20 cars behind that.
And the other, the other thing, the question that I have is, are there two lanes, one in, one out, coming through that chili, or is that just one lane?
That, that, that's a two-way.
Yeah, this is two-way.
This is two-way. Yeah, this is a two-way here.
Okay, and what about in the front, that's two-way as well?
This is two-way here, yep.
No, going this way?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so the...
It's only one way when you get up to the order window, and then you get to your bypass lane.
But what about traffic trying to, you know, move along through, on the site? Which is what, I think, is what Bill Coyle brought up.
Bill, Bill Coyle's a, his...
Blocked access and created backup on Route 20.
Yeah, his, his concerns were cars coming out and waiting to leave to make the right-hand turn. And what, what we found, and me being at the site every day, is that the stop bar is, is located here, you know, for anyone coming from KFC, or, you know, through Route 12. And, you know, everyone kind of blows it off, because it's so close to the intersection, you're already there. I mean, and cars could potentially, you know, back up. So that if there were three cars backed up here, then people coming in would have, be at a stop before they could make a left. You know, part of the reason is, is the tight radius here, and then, you know, like I said, the, the stop bar being there. So what, what we had proposed is softening this radius to make it an easier right-hand turn, moving the stop bar back, so that, you know, once you're stopped, you know, you're, you're you're not already through the intersection cheating through. And then adding the, the do not block intersection signs below all this.
Those work so well.
Well, they actually do, you know, you'd say that they don't, but...
I go to a bank every day on Janus Street. And, no, they don't.
And then, you know, also...
Anyway.
You know, we've, we've got roughly two cars per minute. About two cars per minute leaving their site.
Yep.
You know, one car, or two cars entering, one making a left. And there's a traffic signal, you know, just, just to the north of our site here that gives you adequate, adequate spaces for, for that right turn movement. I've never experienced being second or third in line leaving the site, you know, and, you know, I go in and out of the, the site all day long. You know, it's, it's, I think it's something that looks like it could be a problem, but doesn't function as a problem. And this has been open for, you know, over 10 years and hasn't been.
And if nobody's doing business, Starbucks is gonna be coming there.
I don't know, should we go and look at it?
I think so.
I'd like to.
My question is, on the left-hand side of the curb cut? Could that one be softened as well? Because somebody wants to come in and make a left-hand turn? You know, to go over to Chili's?
This, this curb cut here?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, you know, if you think, that's more for exiting vehicles, making, making the right. You know, a left turn is well higher than, higher than that. I just think it would make it easier.
Got some pretty strong opposition from two, you know, I think, I think it'd be a good idea if we maybe went
No, I mean, if that...
Took a look at the site.
Is that, that bump out, is that an overhang, where a car goes underneath like a roof?
It'd be a canopy as well, yeah. Yeah, it wouldn't be full lane, I think it's, it's only about half the width of the car, four or five feet it comes out. Just, just...
No, I just wanted to make sure that the, that bypass lane actually went through, because if you picked up to where the double line is there on the bump out.
Is it covered?
That was the pickup.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I don't know if you can zoom in, Adam, but there's, if you look at the colored area... So, you know, this, this, I guess, mauve color would be that, that bump out, and that's, you know, just where the, where the employees pass it. This dash line is, is an awning, it's just a fabric awning that basically just protects the, the transaction, you know. People reach you out of their window. It doesn't go the full width, it goes out about four or five feet from, from the bump out.
And what's the, the big yellow where you're marking?
The yellow's concrete, and they, they, they want where the vehicles are stopping to be on a concrete.
They don't push the asphalt.
Yeah, so we did go to IR DCG, sorry, wrong town. We, we did go to DCG, that, that was, Bill Coyle's comment was that, that kind of pinch point that he thought might occur there at the, at the exit. So Pat's response was, round the curving, add the additional stop bar, the additional stop, the additional signage there. And again, with the chief's comments, we certainly understand, don't wanna impact, you know, Route 20 at all. The 400 and, 400-plus feet of queue length, you know, we all feel is adequate.
Right, but what, this is what I envisioned happening, is, is a lot of traffic on Route 20. People coming out of here, come in here, and they're waiting. Somebody wants to come through here and can't get out. Somebody wants to come in here and make a left, they can't. Now the traffic starts backing up on 20. This whole area's gonna be empty, you know what I mean? You have just cars coming right here, just blocking the whole lane from the entrance all the way back to the side.
The other thing is, the signal is right here, you know, that, that blocks, that stops all the, all the traffic through. You know, lets a very clear route, it probably stops traffic for at least 30 seconds.
How do you feel about taking an opportunity to actually go and drive this thing and... Road trip?
I know one, I mean, I, I know, I'm very familiar with the property and where that is, so I can go and look at it.
Whole thing is, is this gets to the point where it's backing up on Route 20, there's nothing you can do about it at that point. Look at what, look at what's going on, you know, with some of the other ones. And Route 20, oof.
I just think, this being the longest over the town in town, I feel better about it, though.
Yeah, be a little less than the others.
And the fact that they can't take a left out. Left, yeah. With the hour ready?
Mm-hmm.
You, they don't know.
You can only go one way, so it's not like...
Yeah, you can only take a right.
Yeah.
Right. But like you say, you get the cars back up there, and then you've got, you've got a bollocks at that entrance.
Well, it's all there, we can look at it, envision it, whoever goes to look.
Sure. So we have the mind that we would like a little more time on this to take another peek and...
I would, yeah.
Yeah. Are we all in agreement on that? Adam, did you wanna add anything?
No, I think you've discussed my concerns. You have your concerns with the crossing of travel. Your concerns with the crossing of traffic and queue length. So those are the big things that stood out that could be problematic.
I think we should all go there with our cars at the same time.
Get some friends and family and...
Some friends and family to join us, yeah.
Follow me real quick.
Only one a minute, though.
Only one minute.
And also, you know, while you're there, there's, the morning side is really, you know, the, I guess it's outbound, there's a Dunkin' Donuts up there and there's a Dippen Donuts, I think that, I don't know if there's been any problems there on the west side.
What commuters are heading.
On the west, yeah.
Right. This is, right, this is the, this is the option.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the, you know, I don't know if there are any problems over there as well, like I said, especially with backups under Route 20.
And the peak hours are kind of off the rest of the hours and the rest of the plasma.
Now, you've got to remember, though, you don't have three properties with one curb cut, you know, in this, or two curb cuts.
Right.
At the same, you know, location.
Right. When they're peak traffic, though, is the other businesses are open, so that's the difference.
Chili's, Chili's and Taco Bell, you would think have similar kind of peaks, right? And they're operating right now at that site with existing conditions.
It's a two to four.
Right. And that's when the peak traffic on Route 20 is...
Seven to nine and two to four are kind of the two-peak times.
Right. The peak traffic on Route 20 going westbound is the afternoon peak when Chili's and Taco Bell have been operating, you know, with no problems. And, you know, we would be, the Starbucks would operate in the morning when there's less traffic, you know, in the westbound direction.
So we want to continue so that we get an opportunity to just do a little bit more on this. The next hearing is...
December 10th.
December 10th. Entertainer motion to continue until December 10th?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you on the 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant Chester Tuttle Post requesting site plan approval in this section 3.2, 3.8 on the zoning bylaws for private lodge or club on property located at 88 Bancroft Street, Auburn, Mass., map 34, parcel 11. Hello.
Good evening.
Just to refresh everybody's memory, my name is Zach LaTorre with H S and T Group. We are the engineers on the project. We meet tonight, it's John Reel. Since our last meeting, we are waiting on the Graves review. We did receive the review. We addressed their concerns and they did issue us a letter basically stating that everything, all their concerns were basically met. There was one additional comment that they made yesterday. We rectify that. And on the email chain with me, Adam, and Mr. Wallace from Graves, rectified the minor comment about the depth of the drywall. So that's, that's all been addressed. Also, a couple concerns with the board. We did add some curb stops along the wall. Lighting is now shown.
That's what you made question, right? Stops.
Yeah. And also just an update on the details as well. Mainly being the roof connection into the drywall be mortared or sealed, so gravel, dirt, things like that don't get in. And also with the, I believe the pavement, that it would be compacted process gravel sub base. We did receive additional comments today. We received an email at 5:20 this evening, additional comments from the town engineer, Joanna Packlin. Most of these comments are very minor in nature. I would like to stress to the board, we're a little concerned on our end, given that we were given them very last minute. And I can see where our last round of revisions caused a big change to the plans that didn't. A lot of these are based off of the first time we submitted them, so there's a lot of frustration. I think the board should know, and I don't know if everybody's aware, this project is due to there being a fire at this property, so it's demolished. So every weekday, time that goes by, they're not allowed to operate, they're not allowed to make money. So time is definitely of the essence. I understand that this board likes a week and, a week before to review any comments. Obviously, we can't address these comments tonight because we had an hour and a half to do so. But I, if the board would allow it, I could go over them one by one and ease your concerns with them. Because like I said, time is kind of of the essence for these guys. I mean, they're sitting in limbo and they have no way to make money. And it's not like it's a big booming business like a Starbucks, like you guys just saw. It's a local, small business, so time is definitely of the essence. So if there's anything we can do to ease your concerns and get this thing pushed forward, we'd like to explore that with you guys.
We just got to that. Oh, okay. I have one.
Graves and...
And some of these comments, there was nine. And like I said, a lot of these, which, again, which was a little frustrating, not that it has anything to do with this board, is these are things that have already been gone over with the sewer water department, different boards, people who have been involved in the project, obviously, because this project did have a fire, so there's, you know, they've been involved since day one. You know what I mean?
Right. Is there a grease trap?
There is an existing grease trap. It's internal. And I believe, John, you can probably expand more than that. They'll have to relocate outside.
Right. We're going to be putting in a new grease trap and we just got the calculations back from our plumber this week that we're going to be using a thousand gallon grease trap. It'll be brand new and we'll be placing it up in the front portion of the building where the sewer line goes out to the street. So we will show that on there and add that to the details.
In terms of the second comment, the sewer manhole, they're talking about the manhole that's located in the center of the parking lot. That's actually just an outside external pump. It's not...
That's where the sewer used to go.
Exactly.
It was pumped up from the basement and pumped out to the street. So obviously, when we put the new building in, it's going to go right over that and we have to eliminate that.
Right.
It's going to be completely gone.
Right. Exactly. So it's not like part of the town infrastructure. It's a private, you know, like a, just a grinder pump, if you will.
It's going to be a new grinder pump system.
Well, no, we're not. I'm...
Gravity will be...
Yeah, it's all gravity now. Yeah.
It's only because they had toilets in the basement originally.
Should have had toilets in the basement.
Right. There's nothing there. Right.
Exactly. Existing landscaping island in the front, all that is to be granite curved, which we did go over with Graves Engineering. I think it's pretty clear from looking at this in the Graves letter that the town itself didn't look at, the engineering firm didn't look at Graves letter because a lot of these were kind of addressed and incorporated.
Well, they could have crossed.
Right. Right. In terms of the retaining wall in the front, it's only two feet in height. Typically, we're requiring fencing on retaining walls that's in excess of four feet and up. I mean, it's a two-foot wall. It's pretty much like a little knee wall. It's not very tall at all.
And again, she does state that that's going to defer to the building commission around that.
Right. Right. And that's, you know, I figured I'd go over it till you sit it on.
Thirty-six inches.
You know what I mean?
Thirty-six inches.
There seems to be some confusion with the review from the town engineers on the grading for the site. I think they're a little confused on how we separated it out. It's basically, I think they're a little confused compared to the existing contours, compared to the proposed spot grades. Because they're saying they're not, they're basically conflicting with each other, which typically when you have a grading plan, your proposed grades and existing grades are going to conflict a little bit because you're obviously manipulating them. So what's going to be happening, just so I can explain it a little further to the board, this front portion of the site is going to have to now be pulled back. So what that would require is a two-foot retaining wall. So like your 100-foot contour in front here will now go into the wall and that will all be pushed back. That's why we've put the spot grades here, so you can now see that it's not going to be no longer 100-foot elevation, it's now going to be dropped down. And the whole reason that was done, it was done that way is so we can now meet handicap accessibility, which before the site wasn't, wasn't doing that.
That's a significant point.
You know, and the same thing for the front entranceway. Basically, that was pulled forward and now tied into the wall. And that allows us to keep this part flat for the handicap accessibility.
The A D A compliant.
Which I think, yeah, exactly. We now have to meet those requirements. And again, those could be, I could handle it then with some phone call, but obviously I couldn't do that before the hearing. The soil testing, that was done on site. It was done. I think, John, you could probably jump into that more of kind of how that all played out.
We did it Friday morning because we wanted to try and get it done before the meeting to get our answers on what was going on in the ground there. So when we did the test on Friday morning, I had called at 8:00 to Jeff to let him know that we were going to be doing that and if he needed to stop by to witness the digging in the hole and doing the test. He called us back around 10:20 and I told him what we were doing. We were still in the process of digging and he said that he didn't really need to come by. He said, "You had an engineer on site. We have a P E that did the actual test." And he just wanted to look at the soil samples and the report from him. So he said, "Just have him send it over to me before, on Monday, before the meeting on Tuesday, so I can make my recommendations to the board that it's been acceptable or not," which he did.
Right. And that's what spawned our comment that we received from him yesterday, is basically we now knew the depth of seasonal Y, seasonal high-water table. So what that did in turn is just affect...
So you're referring to the November 11th letter?
Yes.
From Graves Engineering?
Yes, correct. The one we got yesterday.
Item number eight on the soil testing?
Yes, yeah, exactly. And basically, all that came to be is before we had a six-foot depth drywall, which now because of groundwater, we have to remain two feet of separation, so now it's only going to be a three-foot depth. You know, so basically, it becomes a little longer, but it's a lot more shallow. And that's all that, that's, that was the only change from Monday to today, which he signed off on earlier.
Same cubic footage on the inside?
Yep. Yeah, that's all it is. It's just for our situation where it's more shallow. It's a thousand gallon, they call it the jumbo. It's shaved precast concrete. It's pretty standard.
Anything else?
And I believe...
I think that addresses all of Graves.
Yeah.
That was submitting it tomorrow.
Right. And the last comment from the town was receiving it last minute, which, I mean, we submitted in the proper timeframe, especially with the town engineers, because they would have got it from the original cemental. The Graves, the last-minute Graves response today was just in an additional response. It was just related to the drywall. Everything else was addressed in the proper timeframe. So that's kind of where we, where we stand. Like I said, it's nothing, it's nothing major. My concerns is that I'd hate, you know, I believe from the last hearing, I heard that you're not on until basically another month, which now pushes them even more into winter. And, you know, construction season is dwindling away on us. You know, I'd hate to have them not operational until, you know, spring, summertime. That's just a long time to not be functional.
Nick?
Nothing else.
Scott?
It's a custom that we have and it's a good reason that we have it in place not to, but in this, I understand your circumstances here, so I would not be opposed to looking at this now.
With conditions.
And I guess to piggyback off of that, I mean, it's not, these aren't like, you know, make or break comments to the project, you know what I mean? They're all very minor and very easily addressable. You know, literally could be addressed within tomorrow in a discussion with the town.
The project would be conditioned upon those items.
Right.
Outstanding items being addressed.
Exactly. And we would have no issue with that. Because like I said, there's nothing like, "We hate the location of your building" or something like that. It's all very minor, minor comments that'd be very easily addressed.
Mr. Brooks?
I'm all right with it.
John?
My other question is, you've already done all the demo. You removed the foundation, the old foundation, right?
Right.
Why come there was no erosion control down the back?
I guess I'd have to defer. I wasn't involved at that point.
That should have been done before the demo took place.
I was asking you about the demo with the foundation. And the erosion control. Billy didn't put in the erosion control down the back.
Oh. What do you mean, the hay bales?
Hay bales, yeah.
Well, you can use the waddles.
Yeah.
They're easier to handle.
I wasn't involved in the project at that point. I mean, my surveying team was, they did do the initial survey we did years ago, but we didn't have a design or anything like that, so...
They already had a demo permit to do that before we added this.
Right. Oh, it's leading to another. The erosion controls, I did move off the pavement like was suggested, so...
I would suggest you change the waddles instead of hay bales. They're easier to clean up, easier to maintain.
Yeah. We have no issue. Whatever, typically, it's whatever the town prefers to see.
Want to close the conditions? So...
Motion to close the hearing?
Also some comments?
Public comments? Are there any public comments? Anyone wish to make any comments?
Was there a town inspector that went and checked it out before he started demolishing it? Instead of it's okay to demolish?
Oh, sure. No, that was the issue, wasn't it?
There was no question here. It was coming down. You didn't hear it, it was going to come down on its own.
You know, he didn't say anything about the hay bales then or the...
The demolition permit was not brought before this board. That's not our position. It was just a question I asked.
Just going to have Adam go over the conditions.
So, we've got your evidence comments. Number one, external grease trap. I recommend that the oil, the condition had to be shown on. We submitted plans both where the old one is and where the new one's going to be tied in.
Sure.
So these are the conditions that we're going to approve under, so...
Can I just interrupt? You removed the old grease trap already when you dug up the building, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Never mind. Never mind that.
That's a good point, though. I'm glad you said that.
Number two is, that's the sewer department. We can leave that off. And number three, she won the media, located the entrance in the site. Just make sure that's clearly stated.
Yeah. Yeah, I can beef up the notes on that.
Show some lighting.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Don't forget about the retaining wall. If it's only two feet, again, that departs the building commissioner.
Again, that will, you know, be up to the building board.
Right.
Number five, I think should be conditioned, just to clarify, the grading.
Yep. Right. And I will, I will contact the town engineer tomorrow and kind of go over that with them and make sure everything is understood.
Number six, I'll leave to the board about whether the increase from eight to 10% and 10% is max for bylaws, but...
That was the grade at the entrance? From eight to 10%.
The existing grade is just about 9%. I mean, I can expand it a little bit. I just don't want to expand it too much because then that starts to get, and it starts to interfere with my handicap area.
But the pitch for the ADA assessable...
It's 2%. Is, is two percent and that's all set by those spot grades. You know what I mean? That, that's just the front entrance way. That's it. Just as you come in.
Okay. Um, and also that sight lighting?
And I actually can show you that now.
Did you say you were gonna add some to the building?
Yeah, we're actually going to add wall packs to the corners of the building and we're gonna utilize existing lighting. So there's already lighting, uh, light pole in the back. There's one in the, uh, the front corner here, one in the middle, and also there's another one down the road a little bit. So the site's already pretty lit.
And it'll pick up all the entrances with those, the light packs on the building.
Exactly. Right. And the wall packs are just for that. It's now the new building entrance ways.
Clearly show where the light is.
Yeah, if you can clearly show that on the plan, that would be great. Yep.
Soil testing. Drywall detail, maybe just make sure that's all clear.
Make sure that the drywall detail is clear on the plan as well?
Sure. Yep. That one's, that one's straightforward. Yep.
And that we get a, uh, plan?
Yeah.
For town plan, I guess, the updated plans.
You'll need those before building permit.
Yep, yep.
All right, so motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a motion with conditions as their additional construction, um, Monday through Friday, seven, so typical standard.
Standard eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday, um, eight to noon and on Saturdays. No Sundays or holidays, um, standard conditions, um, as built plan when it's done. And the other board committee, department approvals. It's the usual standard conditions.
How do we confirm that all the conditions have been met? A letter from like Bill and Graves to you saying that they've met all the conditions, they reviewed it with them and they're happy?
Yep. And, um, what I've been doing is when we have conditions like this, have a contingent, we have to have all these met before building permit is pulled.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's a stand-up.
Fair enough.
And if I could just real quick, uh, Adam, um, on these comments, it's one, three, five, and I believe eight, correct?
Six for the lighting.
Six, two, okay. Oh, with the lighting. Sure. And then eight. All right, I just wanted to clarify. Cool.
Take motion to approve with conditions as outlined.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you for your consideration. Really appreciate it.
Good luck. You're right. Good luck.
Have a good night. Thanks.
Night, thanks.
Just a little bit of pressure there.
I know, me too. With just a little bit of pressure there, with all the bets standing out.
I thought they were all here for the stuff.
But it was pretty hard. I just wanna get up and shake my hands and say thank you, you know? Um, applicant S Z L L Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for thirteen lot, single-family home development on property located at one seventy-eight Hampton Street and nineteen Eaton Avenue, map twelve, parcel one twenty.
They, uh, requested a continuation.
Continued. You let me go through all that instead of telling me that?
Can I ask you some more question on that? How many times do you allow the people to continue?
Well, that one, that, yeah, this one is-
Because in the past, we, we go on and on and on and on.
Yeah. So I need a motion to continue that hearing to December tenth?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing till December tenth.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Applicant Massachusetts LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the urban zoning laws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at fifty-four Faith Avenue. Uh, can I have a motion to continue to December tenth?
I'll make a motion to continue till December tenth.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reliant Medical Signs-
I just had what you were saying there.
Okay.
You know what's happening? You're gonna delay and delay and delay and continue and continue and continue and continue. And none of this work's gonna get done over there. That's their motor's apprehend. They'll continue us till the day, daylight ends.
But what's not right is like in, especially in the other weather. We'll plan to come here. We've had, we've come before the meetings and it's continued at the last minute and you get all prepared to come, it ruins the rest of the night and they, they cancel at the last minute or that afternoon without a minute's just, well.
How long are we allowing that one to go on?
That one, um-
I'm gonna tell you why it's not gonna get done.
Couple of safety issues, uh, they outlined a couple, that the board outlined a couple of months, a month ago. Um, once those are done, they can recommend, uh, to the board of selectmen that they accept the, the street. It's kind of waiting on.
Okay.
I personally would've thought they would want it to do before winter sets in, but.
What's your reasoning, John?
They don't wanna go to work.
Why?
Because they probably haven't run the conduit down with a flashing light. Or they may have to cross the road with it and they've already finished paved it. Just like, you know, don't cut the trees down the back.
And I don't know if any of you have been over there, but remember our concerns about that crosswalk on that corner?
Yeah.
Oh my God, so scary. I came around there one day and a kid was in the crosswalk.
Why don't we have Adam contact Bill, uh, Caleb's, and have him go over there to see if these conditions that we have on the plan are there? We were so particular with that.
And I, you know, knowing that, that it's there, I know it's there and it was going very slowly and it was still, I didn't see him until the last minute. So that, that, they're supposed to have the arrows that light up there so that you can see it coming up, not there. So that's something that needs to be, yeah.
They're also not supposed to unload cars on that road and they do.
It's gonna be a struggle. Okay. Reliant Medical Signs, three eighty-five Southford Street? Hi.
Hi, folks. David Cole with Cole Contracting. No drive crews. No cutting trees. I wanna put up three stop signs. So this is over in front of the Reliant Building, the, the new refurbished building there. And, uh, there's two-speed humps in the driveway where everyone walks from the parking lot into the front entrance to slow people down. What's happening is, uh, some of the elderly people were not seeing it and they wanna just keep people, get, uh, slow people down from going zipping by the front entrance. So originally, they had us putting posts in the parking lot, which right now, there's just a ground, you know, a weighted signpost right at the speed bump, which wintertime's not gonna work and so forth. So then they said, "Okay, we'll put them in the sidewalk." Well, you can't really clear the sidewalk well. So then we, we went to putting them in there, there's a stone bed or like a planter in front of the building and these signposts are gonna come up out of that and hang over the sidewalk, eight foot six off the top of the sidewalk so that the mall's plowing equipment, the bobcats and everything else and people can walk under it without contacting the sign. So they're not gonna go over the driving area. They'll be right up to the edge of the sidewalk. So that's the plan. And I gave you a little hand drawing of what, what, what they're gonna be. Uh, just a three-inch galvanized pipe that will sit in a, uh, sonnet tube. We're gonna bury the sonnet tube into that stone flower garden. It'll probably stick up, you know, a couple inches. And then we'll have a flange. This drawing shows it well, if you have it. It'll be a flange here so that we can pour the sonnet tube, put the base in so we're not hanging all this weight on the brand-new concrete, especially while it's cold now. So we'll pour the tubes, cover them up, let them set up a little bit, and then we'll bolt this flange on with those signs on it.
And how high are those signs?
Eight foot six from the sidewalk to the underneath of the sign.
All right. And they hang over the drave, drive lane?
Over the sidewalk only.
Over the sidewalk only, okay.
Not where the trucks or cars drive.
So what's the space between, say, the edge of that sign and the actual, um, right away for the road? Is it right on the edge?
It's inches.
Someone's gonna clip it with a, help truck.
Well, it's, it's back. Well, we can set it wherever.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I've set, well, it's six foot three. The sidewalk is five foot five, but we're also back, you know, the sonnet tube is two feet. So, and the sidewalk's five foot five. So there's five, six, there's seven feet.
Then-
So, and we're only six foot three from here. So I can just make sure that this is back a foot from that, that curb.
It's probably a good idea.
I can put this, you know, wherever.
Yep. And the, how deep is the sonnet tube?
Four feet.
And what is the weight of the arm, the cantilever arm?
Uh, I don't know the- Yeah, I don't know the, uh, physical weight of the pipe.
Is it aluminum or is it?
Uh, Galbi steel.
And is there any rebar in the, uh, sonnet tube?
Yes. I actually sent this plant to Rob Johnson Engineering in anticipation of Caleb wanting the, a, uh, structural engineer to design it, which he did put a design, but he didn't request that from me. So I don't have to pay the engineer a couple grand. It saves Reliant a couple grand on engineering, but I actually have an engineer drawing from him that shows the rebar in there.
Do you remember what size, rebar?
Number fours or number fives?
And how are they placed? They're placed in a circle with a hoop or?
Yeah, with a hoop. Yep. Cause it's, uh, the round two-foot sonnet tube, so.
Surprised you didn't make it out of aluminum. It's so much lighter.
So you just ask him to bring it back, set it up like five to three?
The sign's already made?
The, the pipe's made.
But you can move the sonnet tube back.
Yeah, I can move it wherever, but the pipe is fabricated. And the signs are just, you know, you buy them from the sign company, which we have sitting in the shop.
I need to see the-
Yeah, a truck going by and, yeah.
Yeah, if it's overhanging the sidewalk, it'll, it'll clip it.
Yep.
Uh, for sure. That's why it's back from that edge, you know, whatever, a foot.
Yeah, you move the sonnet tube back a foot, it moves your whole thing back a foot. Gives you a nice safety lane there through the road.
Yep.
That's possible.
No, no, no problem.
And through the chair, that's not competing on, what we want to do is let people know that the speed bump will be there. I think they'll still see it just five inches back a little bit.
Yep.
Is that stop sign lit or is it just a stop sign?
Just, no, it's not lit.
Yeah.
So it's a stop sign and a speed bump sign on two, there's three posts which show on that, on the engineer drawing.
Have you seen the one at St. Joe's Church?
No. Those are, I worked there, too.
It's a stop sign with flashing red lights.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
It's got the solar panel?
Yep.
That would be perfect. That would catch somebody's eye.
Those signs can never be big enough.
No.
You think they're big. They look big on paper. Somebody's in a car, they're going to a medical facility, they're nervous, they wanna be late for their appointment, they almost don't even see them.
They text things.
Not, yeah.
You would text where you're at.
No.
I'd be up taking a picture of my nice signs. At least you crash at the right place, you got a hundred doctors right through the front door.
One way to look at it, yeah.
So I could suggest that to them of, of putting a solar panel with the lighted signs.
Solar powered by however.
Yeah. I think it's, you know, it's a good idea. Just make it as visible as you can make it. Yeah, yeah.
They're probably battery backup or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can we make that a requirement?
Okay, I think require might be difficult because it's, which means that they can request it certainly. You wanna ask them, "Come on, turn this down and say, 'Don't come back with something different.'"
You know, you may not get the design in two weeks or whatever and it's gonna be too cold for concrete.
Right.
They know you're not gonna bring a Eaton unit out there for it. I would suggest that, though, to Reliant. They got the money.
Sure. I've never done one of the lighted, I know just the sign you're talking about because I worked at St. Joe's Church doing, um, on one of the entrances, the, the little handicap entrance there. So I know what you mean. So I don't know whether those are powered, are those powered by-
Oh, it's a solar panel.
It's just solar. So we should be able to do that here.
Probably like a one-hour backup battery or a four-hour backup battery.
Yeah. Okay.
Be pretty simple. It can't be that expensive.
Yeah.
So they'll show a lot better than they will with the other ones.
Yeah, then it'll dry your eye.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree. Plus it makes my price go up. I make more money. Thank you. Let me, let me write your name down. I gotta come before this board more often. Reliant won't like you too much. Yeah, that's fine. I can suggest that to them. I don't see why they wouldn't say no.
It's a good safety factor for the public.
Anything else? Anybody?
No.
No, we should pull the condition that he doesn't move the sonnet tube back.
Yeah, two motions, uh, minor modifications.
Make a motion that they move, move the sonnet tube back and install solar-powered flashing stop signs.
Do you wanna list, do you wanna, instead of say, move the sonnet tube, you wanna give me a dimension from the edge of the signpost to the sidewalk?
I can give you a dimension from the edge of the sign to the edge of the sidewalk, just one foot back.
Oh, that's perfect. Then I, if that, you give me that dimension, then I can move everything where it needs.
The sonnet tube just moves over a foot, you're good. Simple.
Yep. All right. So I obtain a motion to approve with those conditions?
And that this is a minor modification.
And that this is a minor modification.
We'll make that motion first.
Okay.
That this, we consider this to be a minor modification. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we approve with-
With the condition-
The condition that the sonnet tube is moved a foot back and that you add solar stop signs. Okay?
As a suggestion.
As a suggestion.
But the setback is not-
The setback is not a suggestion. The solar stop signs are a suggestion.
Correct. So I think that motion doesn't state it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who, who, who signs off that says we did it right? Caleb?
I'll send you a letter later this week.
Well, I mean, once we're done. Who comes and says, "Yep, they did it the right way"? So he would, he would, okay. So he'll get a, this, these conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'm free to go?
Yep.
All right, cool.
Lundgren Landscaping, one seventeen Washington Street?
Hello?
Hi.
Could you please state your name?
Sure. For the record, I'm Brian Nelson with Metro West Engineering.
Patrick Lundl with Lundgren Hardware.
And behind us, we've got the general contractor, uh, we've got Sean Vahie from C.M.D. And directly behind me is the landscape contractor, Vincent Crafta from Crafta Landscape. So just to refresh your memory, we were here just about a year or so ago for permitting for the collision center and the retail facility for one seventeen Washington Street. Site's progressing along and getting ready to install the landscaping. Um, and so we had prepared a landscape plan associated with the submittal. Um, and as the sites evolved, uh, we've kinda found some issues that we'd like to discuss in terms of kind of the density and the location of some of the plantings. And I know Patrick and Adam that are on the site. Not sure when that was, but that was recently, over the last two weeks or so. Um, so I believe, um, a sketch plan was submitted that shows basically some color-coded portions of the property. And there was some accompanying, some accompanying photos as well. Uh, you have some extra copies here if anybody wants them.
Okay, I'll take them.
Okay.
Um, we, we do have these. Is that-
It's probably gonna be similar to those. Those are the copy of what I shared with Adam on site.
Okay, you've got those.
Yeah, I'll pass a couple around if you'd like. I'm gonna keep one for myself just to kind of walk through. They're stapled at the top right. The photos are all numbered in the top center of the page. Um, and I'm gonna spin this around. I've got two copies of this as well. We have these pictures. Okay. Four. Okay.
We have multiple pictures of the same number.
Actually, we do, too. You have a couple ones and just a few others.
Couple ones, couple threes, couple fours.
Yeah. Um, what I'd like to do is start in, basically at the northwesterly corner of the property, which would be photos one, two, three, and four. And basically, this would be the northwesterly side coming off Washington Street, um, extending basically southeasterly into the site. And photos one, two, and three basically show an area where, um, there's some- Um, extending basically southeasterly into the site, and photos one, two, and three basically show an area where, um, there's some existing screening. Um, and basically there's a presence of ledge in the planting area.
This photo number one.
Uh, either of the two photo number ones are covering that same area.
Each side.
I think, yeah, I think the numbers correspond to the position on this plan here, and they're just a picture of this section of the project, but from different angles.
Yeah. And again, we've, when we had worked through the original landscape plan, we had, um, basically there were, uh, proposed plantings, and then there was also a six foot vinyl fence was proposed. And those were kind of done at the request of the board. Um, we did have fence installer, basically, and, um, had told us when he visited the site, in conjunction with installing the fence. Felt like the white vinyl fence with the, basically the change in topography on site just wouldn't be practical here, so we'd like to see if we could change that to a chain link fence with privacy slats, just to allow that fence to hug the contour of the land better than kind of the stepped up sections of the vinyl fence. Um, so that's basically one initial comment or one revision we'd like to ask for. Um, and then like I said, I can kind of walk through, uh, the plan we had prepared, talk about some of the challenges that are there. Um, and, and basically talk about what we'd like to do in terms of modifications to the plantings.
Okay.
And again, starting at the northwest corner, so this would be if you're entering the site off of Washington Street, this would be kind of that front left portion of the property. And for the first hundred and fifty feet or so, maybe two hundred feet, we've got a presence of boulders, we've got some existing screening. Um, in terms of existing trees and things that are on the site. And presence of ledge in a lot of areas, which will make planting basically, um, of any larger trees and shrubs, um, very difficult, if not impossible. Um, and then also looking at the idea of basically not having to disrupt existing vegetation in order to plant, um, the proposed, uh, row of arborvitae, some of the other trees we had proposed, and then install the fence as well. Um, progressing further along that northerly boundary line, looking at photos five, um, through eight, basically are showing, retaining walls that are being constructed, basically the presence of ledge, um, and being pretty close to the property line. Again, looking at a planting window that's, um, going to be covered by some existing trees. And also, um, basically the presence of ledge behind the wall. Again, there was a pretty steep cut. Especially between locations seven and eight, uh, seven, eight, and nine on our photos, we had to bring the grade down on the site there, so it was basically an eight to a ten foot cut. Um, so as you extend further east, basically looking to keep the arborvitae, um, hedged as proposed, but just there's a little bit more room back there to basically be able to plant a smaller size arborvitae. Uh, I think our plans had showed eight to ten footers, basically with the root ball that would be associated with that, they're gonna be tough to fit in there with the fence and not encroaching on the property line. So going with a four to five footer, which would be a, a smaller root ball, which will allow the, the trees to be planted, but also, um, allow them to be planted in a spacing which will enable them to survive.
They'll have a better chance at a, at that four or five foot with that root ball than they would ten or twelve.
That's correct.
And they're gonna be planted, what, three feet of pirate at that?
Uh.
Three feet.
Supposed to plant it on zigzag.
It's no, a center to center should be probably more than that.
I would think five to six would be.
Probably five anyway, center to center, because when they expand up, they're gonna grow right into each other.
Supposed to be planted on a zigzag.
So.
And how were you putting the fence? You putting the fence? The fence, you're putting, if you were gonna, when you were gonna put the vinyl fence, you're gonna put the fence on the outside? And then the arborvitae on the inside of that?
Actually, we had it the other way. We had it shown on the approved plan.
The arborvitae on the outside.
The arborvitae on the outside.
And the fence on the inside, yeah. So when the fence goes, they have the arborvitae to block it.
Right.
And then we feel also that the chain link fence will be more durable, certainly, you know, longer lasting than the vinyl fence.
Well, the purpose of the fence was to protect on each one of those long, long boundaries going back, the people on each side, as I remember. And so if you're gonna put that six foot cyclone fence, uh, what kind of slats are you gonna put in? You're not putting the, wanting to put the fabric, you're gonna put the slats.
The, the metal slats, yeah, aluminum slats, yeah.
And what these photos really do illuminate is just how close to that house you are.
Yes.
With the line. No.
Flat as well.
With, with what?
What, what was the difficulty with installing the vinyl fence that we requested?
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's basically, um, we've got basically topography rising up forty feet or so from Washington Street. And then basically a little bit of a flat area, and then it starts to head back down as you go towards the rear property line. And it's basically just that change in elevation, having kind of the steps in the fence to allow the sections to be basically placed, you know, parallel and, uh, perpendicular to the post. Um, just having larger gaps, and, and the fence would be, um, difficult, if not impossible, to construct. And, and again, you guys can, I think, talk directly to the fence contractor, yeah.
He was just concerned generally with his ability to install the fence, but the topography that's there, the ledge, um, the spacing with the landscaping, the property line, the retaining walls that are there. Just didn't think he could do it successfully.
Through the chair. You know, the grades were when you started. You go one up and you go one down. So I don't know why this is the revelation, all of a sudden the fence can't be built. Cause if I lived in that dwelling right there, I would not wanna be looking out my back door or my window and seeing a six foot chain link fence with metal slats in it. I don't think you would either in the back of your house. I don't think it's fair.
Have you, you referring to number four, for example? The house it is?
Number two. Now, these are so out of order, and there's no, some ones of order to the photos. It's like one, four, three.
Two, three, four, five.
Seven, six.
Yeah.
This was not well put together. It's kind of confusing. When I look at the photos with the, your construction fence, I'm assuming that's the side you're talking about, that looks like the one that had.
We're gonna do both sides.
Both sides of the property, correct. Both longer sides, yeah.
But it's the side toward Price Chopper that has the ledge, correct?
It's both sides, actually.
Both sides of the property have the ledge coming out of the ground like that?
Yes.
Well, is it, it's not continuous, is it?
It's not, but it's, um, yeah, it's, it's more heavily spotted down at the, um, kind of at the northwest corner, so looking at, you know, locations one through four. Again, it starts to become more of a presence up in here, um, kind of center of the site on the northerly boundary. And then you've got ledge basically, um, along this portion of the southerly boundary here and here. Um, and again, those are associated with some of the larger cuts, um, for the project, it's basically leveled off. You know, in two terraces, an upper terrace and a lower terrace for the Collision Center and the retail building, um, specifically. So we had fairly large cuts, um, in this area and in this area here. And so as we got into that earthwork, definitely found more ledge than.
But as you, on your finished grade, you're gonna be all at one level. So you, you, you're not gonna have those cuts coming off the side of your property lines, dips and.
No, the, um, but at the property line, we're basically following the pre-existing grade, so there haven't been any changes in grades along the boundary, it's just, you know, the, the site was leveled in the middle, in the center.
Might have to jack him out some spotted ledge. Here and there. Cause it seems like the thought is to, uh, still want the white vinyl fence.
Through the chair, I just really recall in the last, when we approved this, that the sound, not just the sight, not just the noise, I mean, sorry, the, uh, the view of see it, were huge concerns, and. I really need to deviate from that.
I mean, I remember when you did this, we worked quite a bit with you, on the grades and the levels and the modifications in the front, and coming in and putting that up the driveway, or what do I, I just remember it was significant.
Yeah, challenging site.
It is a challenging site, and I think we're all of the mindset that we're trying to, um, take into consideration people that have to live there every day. And, you know, um, chain link fence with metal slats is not the ideal. The smaller arborvitae, I think, we believe that that, they'll grow.
They'll grow.
They're better off, they're gonna have a chance.
Goes, the arborvitae will be there to continue to give them some semblance of privacy from the noise and, uh.
On the outside of the fence.
On the outside of the fence, yeah.
Yeah, again, that's how we had it, uh, on the approved plan, correct.
So when I'm looking at photos, three. You have to get lucky not to hit any rock there where the, uh, light pole base went. And, and four, there's no rock there to conduct, construct the wall. And then three, again, I think that's probably at just a different angle with the same photo. No ledge. But two, there's no ledge along that side right there.
Yeah, three and four show, uh, you know, just past the light pole base on photo three, you can see the ledge exposed. Certainly see it on number four as well, right at the bottom left of the photo. And then four, as you're looking down towards Washington Street, shows a little bit right in the foreground as well.
What's the gap between the ledge and the, uh, granite curving? I mean, you had to dig down, what, foot and a half, two feet for granite curving?
Yes.
To get your stand down? That's two and a half feet. So either you remove the ledge to put the, the, uh, granite curving in the, and the light base.
And the wall.
And the wall. It looks like, from this photo here, you're number four, page one of seventy-eight, the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Looks pretty shaly.
It, it was.
Was to rip it out for the.
It was busted up in spots, in some areas it was more competent than others, um, but certainly, uh, you know, this is kind of the fringe of basically what was, what was blasted.
I think there's a smaller arborvitae.
That's fine.
The, uh, white vinyl fence. Cause Scott brought up two, it was sound too. And, uh, there's, you know, population on each side of those, uh, boundaries.
Yep. Was there anything else that you were requesting or?
If I could, I'm Sean Veyghy from CM&amp;D Construction Management, and I was the, were the builder of the, of the project for advocate Barry. The, um, the challenge with the fence, it's, believe me, it's, there's no cost savings for us to put in a chain link fence versus a PVC fence. The, the, uh, the problem is that the fence post for a PVC fence is a five inch by five inch post. Creating an excavation in order to put that in the ground is dramatically different than being able to find the space within the rocky conditions up there to be able to drive, you know, a steel post for a chain link fence. I, I, you know, I recognize what the board is saying, and believe me, I understand the, uh, the interest in creating the most appeal and condition, condition possible for the neighbors. But, you know, physically, it's, it's, you know, it's a limitation that we just, you know, we're up against that, we, we honestly can't do that.
Are there any other alternatives? Besides chain link or a five foot by five foot post?
Five inch.
Or a five, five inch by five inch post?
I don't know, you know, I mean, we'll explore what, what else we could put in there for a fence.
What about a, maybe the, um, galvanized post that you would use for a chain link fence with cedar? Or something like that, I mean.
The cedar will last a long time, reg, the regular pine stock A fence.
Pine stock, yeah. Talking about the cedar, and those are easily replaced, and you can, you know, when they put them up, there's no gaps. And it would give you the sound, and it would look a hell of a lot nicer than chain link with metal slats.
We can explore that. As Brian had said, the, the topography is, is, is moving. And, um, the opportunity with the chain link, as a chain link fence on a, and I understand your point, but I just, just to explain that the, the fixed nature of sectional fence, whether it's wood or whether it's PVC, you know, is such that you, you have a section that's basically, if you install it correctly, top of the fence is the same, you know, and it just doesn't lend itself to a, a condition of undulation of a, of a grade. So we really have the two issues. We have one where the grade is not consistent, it's not a, a flat surface, or it's not a surface that even, you know, gradually rises or, or drops. That's the challenge that we have.
It's like the sine wave, you're saying?
You got it. Exactly, exactly. Now, that's not the condition everywhere, but it's substantially the condition that we face.
That's why I asked you, was that when you went to your second level where you went up in the back, is, is a contiguous grave that's all evened out?
It flattens off in spots, yeah.
And then it drops down like?
And it starts to drop down, but it, the topography is, you know, on a, on micro scale, there are undulations, you know. So when I say it's flat, it's relatively flat, but the elevations are, you know, up and down a couple feet here and there. Um, certainly as you, you've got a, definitely a progression in elevation, um, rising from the street about two thirds of the way back, you rise about forty feet. And there are some, kind of some bumps in that, um, but you've got that general uphill pitch, and then you've got the downhill pitch, um, from that two thirds mark down to the rear of the property. So the grades are fairly steep, you know, the driveway is basically, I think, a nine or eight and a half percent grade, so that's one of the flatter grades, you know, for the pre-existing topography.
And when you talked about the five by five vinyl posts, you're saying it's harder to drill them into rock or whatever it is. Maybe you could talk to the sign company and could, they could use a galvanized post and affix that vinyl to it. I think what you need to do is probably come, look at it, cause you know how we feel, and, and come back with something else.
We might be able to, uh, we might be able to use landscaping, you know, the plantings, as you, you recognize the five to six, you know, foot arborvitae. Rather than a fence, to create a denser screening and tighten it up. And we've been successful many times having the plantings be a better screen than any fence, um, you know, and maybe add.
Well, it has, if they're gonna be like John had said earlier, offset and this and that, but they, we still wanted two things, and you'd need to have a, an landscaper or a professional tell you what that depth is, cause I know, I've done it a lot, but you put them and you think, oh, well, they're all spread apart, you can't see them, and then five years later, they're touching each other.
Right, yeah.
You want it to, to be done right. I, we just think you need to come back with some alternatives and.
Would the board not like them to touch? So, so.
Well, at some point, yeah, but still have enough, because, yeah.
You gotta get.
You gotta get the right stuff, because sometimes I have, there's certain things that are meant to grow together like that, and they can all jam in, and they'll grow, but arborvitae is not particularly that.
The, the point that you make on the five to six, it also allows us a root ball size that in those soils conditions, we'll actually have a better chance of living.
That's what I said, it's absolutely, I, I must have missed it when you said they were gonna be ten or twelve in the past thing, cause I would've said. Small.
What if you planted arborvitae, had you want them to kind of crash together, so it becomes a solid screen?
At some point, yeah, not.
Yeah.
Not initially.
Right, not right away.
No, not initially.
They gotta be able to get there.
Good.
Well, I think we're of the mindset that you need to be creative here, and let's come up with something that's gonna, um, be good for everybody.
The, the last thing, if I could, present to the board is we're, we're facing, you know, uh, a changing, obviously, it's a lot colder right now than in our, in our planting season window. Might not be what we thought it was gonna be, so I don't, I don't know how that would, if we'd be able to plant in the spring as opposed to the quality, couldn't accomplish a successful planting.
And when do you anticipate the completion of the project?
We're, we're weeks away.
Weeks away?
Yeah, from being complete with the, with the building and having the building ready for archivacy.
If they come back with some kind of a presentation to us and we pick it, I don't have any objection if they did it in the spring.
Yeah.
What it makes a, what it makes a better.
We want it to be the best.
Jammed in.
Right, let's not just rush this along, just so, you know.
We don't have a.
Our preference is to complete it this year, to be honest with you, we'd like to be done with it, I'm sure Patrick would too, and, and move on, but if it means doing it, you know, the right way, and it needs to be the spring in order to do that, we'd rather do it the right way.
We agree.
And as long as it doesn't prevent Patrick from operating his business, I think, Patrick.
Oh, we're not, we, yeah, we, we'll be all right with that condition. Oh, we're not, we, yeah, we'll, we'll be all right with that condition.
Thank you.
Creative.
Yeah.
All right. Appreciate it. Auburn Mall signs, 385 Southbridge Street.
I feel like the last man standing.
So is this a minor modification? Okay. Yes, it's a minor modification. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Mike Anakin, KG Sign, representing Auburn Mall.
Idea. Tell us what you want to do.
They want to add, or actually, one of these signs, the first picture you're seeing would replace an existing sign. And then they want to add one that's in front of the entrance, which is actually the third page in a.
The big black fourth page. Auburn Mall Simon.
The, the big black one that's on the wall is actually not in scope at this time, nor is the.
Oh, okay.
Nor is the one that's off to the right that's mounted to the garage. With precipitating all of this is similar to coal contracting. It's a, the Reliant is, is bringing in a different clientele, obviously more of an age age clientele. So they're trying to direct, to get, to get that part directed, to make sure that the people that need to get to the Reliant entrance and getting to the Reliant entrance, because it is, Reliant has two entrances to the building, neither one of them are through the mall. So they're trying to clear that up so that they're not having people parking under the garage, walking into the mall and finding out that they can't get into the Reliant space.
Okay, that makes sense.
The only other thing I'll say about the signs is we had offered them two different options based on these designs and they went with the higher value option. So they're actually, they are looking, they will be coming back here at some point in time. Right now, this is an immediate need because of Reliant, but they are looking to do a complete site, to do the whole sign package over. Everything right now looks like it was built in the 80s with all the purple and.
I was going to say, it's well past due, I mean.
Yeah, so these are much more upscale. What these signs are actually going to look like is that the white, the white face is going to be a really thick piece of acrylic that's frosted. So, I mean, it's very upscale looking, that that creates depth. So when you put lettering in front of that, it actually has like a shadow effect to it. So they're actually going to be very, very rich looking, is what they're looking to do.
And the colors, are they going to be black and white?
Black and white are the Simon branding colors. One good thing, I mean, I don't know if you've noticed.
And is that most conducive for people with vision, you know?
The contrast.
The black and white, the contrast?
Yeah.
Okay.
They are illuminated, the background will be illuminated, the lettering will be black. The upper section, obviously, with Auburn Mall will be the opposite of that, the black.
Right, with the white lettering, right.
The white will.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wendy?
Yes.
Can I ask a moment?
Sure.
How high, like in this one that's Auburn Mall, I saw your dimensions on the other sheet, but the letters, like mall and entrance, how high, how tall are those letters?
I can't tell you off the top. I would, if I had to guess, I'd say probably five inches.
Because it just seems small to me. People are driving when they're coming up and they look, trying to look at the sign, they're supposed to be looking at where they're going and.
Yeah, actually, I mean, I, to me, these are, it's appropriate to, to the placement that where the sign's going, you're already, you've already turned into the mall. I would agree with you if you were putting these out on, you know, out on Southbridge Street, which actually, I mean, there is no signage out on Southbridge Street as it is. But at this point, I mean, the speed limit here right now is, I think, like 10 miles an hour. Granted, whether it's followed, yes, but, so, and really what they're.
Trying to have you not take that right.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're trying to get people to.
Put it in the middle of it where you can usually see where the guy's head is.
Shouldn't it say Reliant, arrow straight up too?
It's actually, I honestly didn't notice that it was there.
Yeah. I, I'm looking at this going, well, it should say Reliant with an arrow straight up and then mall entrance, you know?
Not Reliant.
Yeah.
You say Reliant straight.
Yeah, nothing else. Nothing else.
Everything goes to that one.
Well, that's why I would start with, Reliant would be the first one with the arrow going straight and then it would be mall entrance and, you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, that's just.
You probably don't even need the Macy's mall entrance. Everybody that's going knows where it is.
And you know, I'm seeing that these are going to be vinyl adhesive letters on that sign. How long are those going to last outside? Or is it a reverse? Is it a reverse engraved or you're just slapping the vinyl let?
No, it's a vinyl letter that's on, on the plastic.
On the plastic. How long do you think those are going to make it?
20 years.
Really?
How easy are they to change?
That's why we're using acrylic is so that if I used, get into the nuts and bolts, but if I used Lexan, Lexan tends to yellow.
Yellow, yeah.
And so acrylic does not.
Brutal.
So what I've spoken to them about is I tell them that, you know, you'll probably get, you know, five years before there's noticeable ghosting in the acrylic and these faces are changeable. So that.
I'm just going to come in and out.
Yeah, because the color will fade too off the black with the sun and everything like that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way that the vinyls work these days, they.
Yeah, when you think about vinyl truck lettering and things like that, it lasts.
Yeah, I mean, I have gas station canopies that are printed that are 15 years old right now. So I think it's amazing where the technology is.
Yeah, yeah.
So the five inch letters, is that like the Auntie Anne's, the Captain Louie and those and the ones above it are bigger than five inches? That's what they're appears on there.
Yeah, they, having mall entrance, Macy's Food Pavilion, I would say those are five inches and the others, and these, again, I'm guessing based on just being in the business for a long time, the others are probably, if I had to guess, they're probably two inch cap height. This is, again, it's standard to, it's typical of, like the Solomon Pond Mall has a very similar situation where they're, they're trying to get you the, the traffic throughout the parking area.
Right.
So that you know, you know, Macy's is down the far end, you know, or in the, you know, where, so you know where, exactly where you're going. For Auburn, it's actually more of an addition, because they, right now, they don't have, they have directory signs, but they're not listing out different tenants per se.
Right. Anything that helps with wayfinding, if you can?
Oh, yeah.
My own belief, and I mean, I've been built, been in Auburn for 20 something years, I, it is a, it's a vast improvement from where they're at right now.
To the chair, I spoke to the building commissioner, he didn't have any issue with the signs. So when they do come back next year, or whatever it may be, to do the rest of the mall, we're going to ask for a master plan for the signs, which is one of the requirements assigned by law. For us, small changes like this, we haven't been asking for a full makeover, which we'll be asking for.
Well, we first need a motion that this is, we all agree that this is a minor modification. So.
This is a minor modification.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. The second thing is, just like to say that we think Reliant Medical should be the first thing updated, the arrow pointing straight.
Or at least on the sign.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah. I think, well, I mean, if you're trying, if the whole idea is to get people to rely on them.
Who wants to rely?
How am I supposed to see it if I'm driving?
You don't want them going with the long letter going to print it up.
Right, right. But it, you know, they look great and I think, like you say, I mean, it's an improvement.
Wish Attorney Broda was here. I'm sure they had their reasons, but we told them to have a mall entrance.
Yeah, yeah. So looking forward to entertain a motion to approve with our suggestions.
I'll make a motion to approve with our suggestions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we have to sign a decision for strategic behavior solutions.
Makes for the patience as well. Well, good night.
Good night.
You're going to tell us chopping at the bit, sitting, listening to the stop sign. I'm like, I do this. You should ask some public comment, Ben.
He actually did that sign too. He did sign on my building, yeah. So we have meeting minutes from October 22nd. Were there any changes, additions, deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting.
Okay. Second?
Your options, Scott.
Yep. Second, on the minutes, anybody? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And new business unforeseen by the chair, I don't have any. Adam, do you?
Was Buckley's thing here was in mind? Do we sign that? So.
Buckley was, that is.
No, that was mine.
Did we skip over the arcade?
The arcade withdrew.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's quite a bit of opposition to that.
There's a difference of opposition.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, had they had it staffed all hours while they were open and operating, I think maybe they would have looked at it differently, but they. It would have, when the machine goes down, a kid just pumped a buck into the machine or two bucks or whatever, and the machine doesn't work, what is he going to do? Kick the machine in and there's nobody there to stop them, right?
They should have little bats standing, smashing them, lose your money.
I don't know, it's just, it's a little, a little unusual. Anyway, any, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You guys are having way too much fun down there. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.